All right, it is six thirty. I hereby call me to order. Um, it is Tuesday, May twenty eighth, and we are in City Hall. Uh, can the clerk please state for?
Klein.
Here.
Enoch.
Here.
Pujol.
Here.
Roder.
Here.
Stagg.
Here.
Thank you. Uh, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So much.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Public comment, I know people are here for agenda items, we'll get to those, but. Anyone online for public comment? All right. There are no public comment, we will move on to the consent agenda. Uh, anything they need to know or just scan your stuff?
No.
Yeah. All right, then can I get a motion to approve?
So much.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Mike? Uh, any discussion on any of the items? All right, all in favor of approving the dissent agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Uh, number six, event permits. Uh, Sonia is doing a Prairie Football fundraising bags tournament on July fourteenth, needs to close some streets. Um, filled out the permit item that which is in your packet, any questions?
They want it closed from nine in the morning until eight at night?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Standing for the back there.
Think it starts at eleven?
We probably have check and starting.
And they, one year until. Well, they've moved it up now, but the one year until ten o'clock.
Jeez, and that's.
That's like, it started at like ten thirty or eleven.
They had some big ones.
The turn up button.
That's good.
Motion to approve.
Thanks, Mike.
So good.
Second by Daryl. Uh, any other discussion? All those in favor of approving?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, LRS solid waste contract, I know we have some from LRS here, thank you for coming.
Absolutely.
So we had a little snafu a few weeks ago?
Absolutely. And I absolutely apologize for that, I, it was a miscommunication between myself and a co-part that I thought was under handling the Swisher setup. Um, once I found out immediately from you guys, I agreed to anything that you guys needed, I knew that we had screwed up and it was our fault, and I'll take full responsibility for that. Um, and we got out the next weekend, we had the cleanup, and then we intended to be back again on the eighth. So, truly, truly was a miscommunication, it was definitely not purposeful by any means. I just thought someone else had handled it, and so it was one thing that I took off my plate that I probably should not have taken off. I apologize for that.
Do we, can you give me your last name?
Mike, LA, anything.
Thank you.
Questions?
Questions?
You got, you sent out a, a schedule for the, for the rest of the year, or somebody sent us out a schedule for the pickups for the rest of the year. Yeah. There's been a couple times in the last year where we've had guys that, or people had their garbage out thinking it was on, say, our Wednesday or whatever, and then it wasn't or whatever. Would this be something that we could always have ahead of time, so that we could publish it and we can, all of us people could get out, all of us members could get? Cause if, in the past, it, it's a, personally speaking, it's a pain in the butt for me because I live on a place where if somebody gets their garbage out and it doesn't get picked up, it blows all the way down in my yard, I mean terribly. Yeah. When, and, and it seems like when that's gonna happen, it's gonna be the windiest day of the, of the week, you know, just. Absolutely. And I know a lot of citizens, like the older people pull their garbage out, and then all of a sudden it doesn't show, you know, pulling it back in. One of the things that we're trying to improve on, done well in other cities, and I will admit that we need to work on, because you should have a direct line to me, I thought that you guys did have a direct line to me, because if you would have called me, I would have known. I would have been out here on that Saturday, and, uh, so I apologize. We need to work on, make sure you guys have a direct connection to me, because that's essential. I mean, we're, we're, we provide a service for you guys, you need to be able to get to me, or at least my supervisor, say, hey, this isn't right, can we get it fixed? Usually you'll get a quick answer. Um, we ask the residents to go through our call center and everything, but you guys shouldn't have to do that. So, um, you have my email correct, my email has all my information on it.
I do, yeah.
Yeah, so please feel free to pass that to anybody. Again, the res, please don't do it to every resident, because I won't be able to answer every question. But for city business, absolutely, you know, direct call to me is, is expected. I would expect you guys to give me a shout, shoot me an email, anything that's not going well. Um, that, I created that, I recognized that issue, I created it probably six months ago, at, when we just started into the year, I should say. And I, just for another city, and I said, you know what, this is something we need every year for every city to have a clear understanding. I saw it posted outside, that was awesome to see. It's really helpful. Yes, very much so.
So, but I just, I just got it for the first time.
I know, and I asked, and I'm disappointed about that, because another city asked for that.
Yeah, not that there was anything on it prior, but I think there was a change prior.
Yeah, president's day.
This year or something. That wasn't, that's not on it, but, yeah, that's why I kinda asked, it's like, I, I've worked for cities that I'm used to getting them in December to take care of the whole year.
For the whole year, yes, and it should be that way, absolutely. That's what you're gonna do moving forward, right, for twenty twenty-five? Absolutely. Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Okay.
Uh, nothing really is gonna change as far, we always do a day, day behind on six major, six major outlays. But this is an excellent reminder, and it's easy to do, I don't know why. I, I'd asked my team to send it out to all the cities, and I found out this past week, of course, when I was on vacation, that didn't happen. Um, but it sounds like most cities have it now, and at least you guys have it for the rest of the year. Sure.
Good for this extra trash pickup day out here, would you say the eighth?
Eighth, Saturday, the eighth.
Okay, we got that advertised fairly well.
It's up online.
It's on Facebook, yeah.
Yeah.
And on our website.
And I emailed it out to all the email lists that I have.
And I know, we were telling people, when I was down here, as I came down to meet up with the supervisor that day, he was also telling people, cause people were asking some different questions, so hopefully between the people that came and were like, hey, there will be a second day, and the people that see it online that normally be out of town. And it's, I mean, it's posted, it's back there, just, just those things, just.
It, it'll go well, I, I, I promise you that that was an anomaly. Um, I will not let that happen again, because I, I just assumed that someone else had taken over the reins, that I, I've done seventeen of these now this year, and every one of them went very, very well, and this is the only one that did not, it's the one I didn't have hands on, and I promise you I'll have hands on it for duration of my career.
Well, thank you for that.
Absolutely, you, it's, it's, it, I, I feel horrible, I feel horrible, it should not have happened. I, and I'm, I'm here to, to personally just let you guys know that I, we, we did you wrong, we failed you, and we're gonna make it right, and so far we're trying to make it.
So then, like, I know that you, you would try the number which I think, the office number?
Must be your generic, whatever.
It's a, it is.
And, and there's no, there's no like.
Not on the weekends, so.
Okay, okay. So it should have been to the, would the call center have done anything at that point?
So we, we have a local call center, that's one of the things that we're, yeah, they wouldn't, there's nobody that really keeps track of that over the weekend.
Right. Okay.
So, if you guys would have had my number and called me directly, then I would have freaked out, and then had two trucks up here right away and, and taking care of you guys. Still would have been mad at me, because we've been a little late, but at least we would have been able to take care of you guys. So, in communication, we've gotta improve. I, uh, I, I try to, a lot of, a lot of communication facilities go to our call center, I need that to come to me. There were customers and the commercial council and things like that that go on, but I really want you guys to, just, so I, it's a peace of mind for me to know that you guys are in a good spot. I don't wanna find out afterwards that they were not, uh, were not doing what we need to do.
Any questions or concerns?
We've answered all mine, concerns anyway.
Thank you for being honest with us.
Absolutely, absolutely, I believe that's policy.
Does council want to take action at this point, or just wait?
Again, I, I'll gladly come up here and speak to anything you guys have an issue or anything like that you need me to address, not a problem, I'll be right here, in, in, I mean.
We appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Have a good year. You too.
All right, uh, resolution twenty-eight, consideration of approving final reimbursement to Johnson County on cautious portions of Division Street. I heard my project.
So to give the council an update, um, Friday, I did get an email from, because I, I'd sent an email to our engineers asking how the meeting that they were supposed to have had last week went, and would there be anything in for the council's packet? Um, and what I got from Tim was apparently the contractor, Helling, ended up not being able to, available this week, last week, for the meeting. They are available next week, so that's when we will be getting together. Um, no action for Monday, likely for the tenth. I have already been involved with the Johnson County supervisors and have been filling them in on what is going on. Their engineer had not told any of the supervisors any of this. So they were all very unaware, and they are going to be meeting with me to discuss this situation. So hopefully between them and me putting a lot of pressure on the engineer to get it done, it can get done, cause we need it finished. And then once it's done, supervisors and I can figure out what is up with this ten-year agreement that doesn't make any sense at all. So, we need this first step to be finished before we can tackle the other step, but I already reached out to them, I was like, this is taking too long. So, we don't have anything for you guys tonight, but there are a lot more people involved.
I hope our council and future councils do not ever make another.
Oh, I hope not.
Idiotic agreement like that.
I can't believe with the attorney, if you, I'm sure the attorney reviewed that agreement.
Yeah.
Because that, that really, I, I mean, that's one of the things that, you know, kind of you always remember. Like, you can't bind a future council to something like that.
I just don't.
So I don't understand how it actually.
Where the ten-year number and how that all came up.
Or, yeah, I, I, I don't, I, I don't know, between when the project started and who's sitting on supervisors right now, it's not even the same board there.
Yeah.
There are a couple same people, but.
So I don't know, maybe.
Which might help.
They might give us some leniency, especially.
Might give us some leniency where they're only released from that. We've never heard of this either.
Even if they backed it two years, it'd be nice.
Yeah, so we'll see. They are definitely working with me and trying to figure out what is going on. So, no action could be taken, because we don't know anything.
Okay.
Uh, moving on to nine, public hearing for the development agreement with Forest Ridge, uh, can I get a motion to open a public hearing?
Motion to open public hearing.
Thank you, Adam.
Second.
Second by Cody.
Uh, do you need all in favor?
Mm-hmm.
Sure. All in favor of opening public hearing?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Our public hearing is open at six forty-three PM. Um, so the notice was, excuse me, published, posted, um, in advance for the meeting as required, and no comment received. Is there nobody online still?
Nope.
We'll give it ten more seconds, and then we can close. All right, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close.
Sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, resolution thirty-six. Uh, consideration of approving development agreement with Forest Ridge, authorizing annual appropriation tax increment payments and pledging certain tax increment revenues to the payment of the agreement. Um, this is number ten in your packets.
So, Cody, you might not have a copy of it, but everybody else on your, um, tablet will have the actual development agreement, I was waiting on some, some items, well, the resolution is in there, but the actual agreement, since you download it always, I don't know if you, yeah, or if you wanna take the stick and pull it. So, the development agreement, um, there were some items that needed to be filled in by the developer, um, and he had some questions, of course, I sent it to, to Mark Ralston, he had some questions that I needed to get back with Amy York, the Dorsey and, the Dorsey and Whitney Bonding Attorney. Um, so, again, waiting on her, getting back with Ralston, excuse me, Ralston, um, those questions had to do with the legal fee payment of the twelve thousand dollars, he wanted to know how that worked. I wasn't quite sure if that was just an upfront payment to the city, but what Amy said, um, was that most cities will withhold it on the rebate payments back to the developer, so it might not be all paid, obviously, in the first rebate agreement, depending on the increment amount. Um, what did I say these were? Oh, he, he had a question about, actually, it was on exhibit, not on exhibit C, but on exhibit E, he said, really, I gotta fill all that out, I was like, well, you do, we'll work on it together, um, and then exhibit C, he is supposed to give us an estimated timeline and specifications of infrastructure. And I, I, I don't have that yet from him, I spoke with him again today, I emailed it again. Last week when I got the entire agreement from our bonding attorney, and I'm, I'm gonna start referring to her as our tip attorney. Um, our tip attorney, I sent it to, to him saying, you need to fill out exhibit C. And then today again, I was like, Mark, I need to have a timeline, and what Amy said is that we can put a date in there, but if he can't meet that, if it's unrealistic, what's the point of that?
He, he should be on the, like, estimate.
And I, and I, I did, I said, like, just give me, you know, he's like, well, they're all gonna be estimates, I was like, yeah, I get that, but give us something so the council can see that. Um, I don't have it yet, as of coming over here from my email. Um, but I did question our tip attorney. Uh, is the council okay to approve the agreement at their meeting tonight if I haven't received the completed exhibit C? She said, yes, you can have the council approve without exhibit C. That basically, the resolution is a legal formality, those exhibits, as well as some other exhibits in that agreement, can't be filled out until final invoices are received, and, you know, some of those, some of those items can't be filled out at this time, so.
And this.
And I do have her cell number, if you have questions that I can't answer, but I'll do my best.
This tip agreement, is this a ten-year agreement we have with tip, ten years, right? What happens if enough lots aren't sold in that ten years and we're committed to a payment?
He doesn't get anything.
He doesn't get anything, right?
He won't get anything.
And, and so it expires after the ten years? And what is, the tip starts the day we sign this approval? When is it, when is it?
No, no, it's, um, it's written in there.
January? Yeah, it's more confusing in there.
It's bad in there.
He doesn't get money until the.
Lots, but, how about the bare, how about the bare ground, was that certain, the bare ground?
Isn't it when, cause it's the change in property value when the house is built, it's in.
Yeah, it's, it's agreement, the taxable housing budget or property rule, that is of twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, so it's, it's the assessed tax value.
Right.
On to the property as of twenty twenty.
He said it was supposed to be a year after.
It's a year.
It's like eighteen months.
Back.
Yeah, a year behind, I think.
Yeah, cause that's how taxes work, so that's.
It's in twenty twenty-six. Oh, gee.
And this.
Oct, uh.
And this is just for phase one, correct?
Yes.
Cause if on phase two, that's all we get, same.
Yep, just phase.
Yes, we haven't agreed to anything from May to.
We haven't agreed, nothing's passed.
Just the first thirty-five houses.
Actually, if you look at, um, that, the, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, paragraph down on the development agreement, whereas the base valuation of property, the purpose of calculating incremental property tax revenues as herein after defined, uh, blah, 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 of the property as of January first, twenty twenty-five. So that's the value that you're paying property tax on eighteen months after the fact.
Well, it's, it, it could be on the bare lot then.
That is what, that will be the base value.
Yeah. Yeah.
The bare lot.
Only if the house is built on there, isn't it?
The base value is the bare lot.
Yeah.
The house is what's built on top of it, and it's, the difference is the increment.
Yeah. Yeah, I know.
The incremental difference, it's gonna be the.
Thank you.
Okay. Questions?
On, earlier when we talked with Ralston, when he came in here, I was thinking he was talking about most of the lots being like one acre lots. Not that I guess it would.
No, they're smaller, cause they're an acre in size.
Yeah, they're really small, like, way small, but there's like one of them, first thirty-five, that's an acre lot.
Yeah, cause the zoning is not for acreages, it's for that residential size that's like a, a third, half.
The whole property is like eighty acres, and it's like one hundred and forty, man?
Eighty acres.
Yeah.
Hundred acres, that's not, not including streets.
That's not even streets or any acres.
Yeah, attention bases, yeah.
Yeah. So it'll be a lot like Orchard Heights, it will be a lot like.
Yeah, it'll be like Orchard Heights, or Fisher's first development.
Our new Orchard, Fisher's. Yeah. It's not the condos.
Which actually does, the lot sizes that he has on there are bigger than the lots on Orchard Heights. On mine, like, it was one of the biggest, it was point three-three. Yeah, that's. Mine's a point one.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah, so.
Other questions or concerns?
Question to approve, resolution thirty-six, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Cody.
Sir.
Second by Adam. Can I get a roll call though, please?
Klein.
Aye.
Enoch.
Aye.
Pujol.
Aye.
Roder.
Aye.
Stagg.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, number eleven, hold a public hearing for the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, City of Swisher proposed budget amendments. Can I get a motion to open public hearing?
Roll call.
Second. Second by Mike, all those in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is open at six fifty-two.
Again, notice was published, posted, um, as required, and no public comment charged.
Nobody online?
No one online.
No one online?
This is just standard budget update stuff.
Yep.
Um, yeah, it's for stuff, looks like last, last time, yeah. I'm gonna wait like thirty seconds. All right, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Who?
Motion to close.
Kurt, all those in favor of opposing?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, uh, resolution thirty-seven, approving the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, City of Swisher proposed budget amendments.
Motion to approve, resolution thirty-seven, twenty-four.
I got a couple questions for us.
Well.
You can, you can motion somewhat second, and we can still assess.
Okay. Okay, good.
So, Cody and Adam. Mm-hmm, discussion?
What's the extra thirty-five thousand for public works?
I'd have to pull the worksheets from last month, or last meeting. I, I, off the top of my head, I don't, I don't remember that, but I can certainly go around the packet. It's just.
I saw this one, got it.
Yeah, did you see both of them?
Yeah. That just got done today?
Yeah. If you still have your packet from last time. It's the one with the yellow highlights, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, it would have been item twenty-five on last time's packet, the valley.
Yeah, so fifteen thousand of the salaries, ten thousand of the Cava House alley, I mean, it's a number of things. Shop utilities, obviously, you're adding another building, work comp insurance, I first like, uh, cause those are on salaries.
You didn't figure them in when you guys did, when we did the budget?
No, we would have known utility increases at that time, cause we hadn't been in that building for a year yet. And, and you approved the Cava, or some of the council approved Cava House improvements, and it was not budgeted.
For the alley, yeah.
Or Cava House alley, that's selling.
Yeah, come up with that somewhere.
That was Steve's dead worker.
Yeah.
And then didn't we approve raises, right?
I'm sorry?
Didn't we make changes to the raises that might not affect your, to salaries?
Well, I don't know when Dylan was added in as a full-time person, so that could be part of that.
Yeah, I don't remember. Yeah, okay, I remember.
He went part, went from part-time to full-time, and that, that was before me, I don't know.
Oh, yeah, that's true. That's probably where the.
The south, yeah, I don't know.
The council, yeah.
Other questions or concerns?
The community economic development, was that what that grant that we said was approved for years ago, last year?
The twenty-two thousand?
Yeah.
Amendment? Yeah, what was that?
Well, again, if you look at that, it, it's a number of things.
Okay.
Um, so that, you know, four thousand dollars over the budgeted amount, that was to remove ash trees. Um, the count plan was not budgeted, that was eight thousand dollars.
Okay, all right, that, that's fine.
And then, yeah, that farmer's market grant was part of that, because on the expense side, it wasn't budgeted, so you have to.
But we're too sure it is income, could, could.
Well, yes you do, you show it as income, but you don't.
But you can't put it back in the fund, right?
No.
Okay.
The, the city government is a cash basis accounting, so you show money in, you show money out.
But that, that basically, there are money in that, in the fund, right?
I'm not going, no, it's not, I'm not discussing that.
Even if it raised, when it's openly raised, uh, I think, now that's, that's a, we'll talk about that later, we'll, we'll talk about that later.
The community fund is exactly, exactly, yeah. Exactly. Yeah, yeah.
Other questions? We have a motion in a second, if there's no other discussion, can I please get a roll call?
Enoch.
Aye.
Pujol.
Aye.
Roder.
Aye.
Stagg. Klein.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, resolution thirty-eight, approving preliminary and final plan for America Commercial subdivision, part three, in Johnson County, Iowa, within the two-mile fringe area of Swisher. And the mayor's here, can you, you have questions?
And, um, it was, uh, reviewed by the planning and zoning commission, and they did make a recommendation that the council approve the, um, preliminary and final plan from there.
So we approve it?
Second.
Discussion? Can I get a roll call, please?
Pujol.
Aye.
Roder.
Aye.
Stagg.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Enoch.
Aye.
That motion passes.
Thank you.
Good to go.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, fourteen, review current pay period and payroll process, I would like to say Shelley has been working on this for quite a while, and has discussed with all of the city employees, so they are aware, um, of the changes that were proposed.
Yeah, and just, just to give you a few points as to why, I would request that this be changed. So right now, the city, um, pay periods end on the fifteenth, and the last day of the month. And payroll is processed and checks are cut on the fifteenth and the last day of the month. So, I'm getting time sheets, I'm processing them, because employees are expecting to have their paycheck noon or thereafter, whenever the mayor can come in and sign. Um, so if the fifteenth or the last day of the month fall over a weekend, we're paying for hours that haven't been worked. And I always hear, oh, we'll make, if something changes, we'll make that adjustment on the next payroll. And I've never seen an adjustment, so I'm not saying that it needed to happen, but I've just never seen one come in. Um, so then computing overtime becomes an issue, because if the fifteenth, let's just say, the fifteenth falls on a Wednesday, and employees are not to have overtime until after forty hours in a work week, right? Getting him out the door, I forgot my first. Oh, no. So, um, yeah, so it's always, it it, I've really gotta be have my eyes looking at time sheets because, you know, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, you know, you're, let's say there were, just an employee has worked nine and eight and seven, they're counting an hour of overtime, but truly not because you haven't, you haven't proved that you've worked forty hours yet, okay?
Yeah.
All right, so, and then, yeah, just like I talked about before, there's no time between the end of the pay period and the payday. And so that can also create issues if or when it's an employee terminates or, you know, any, either way. Um, it just, it's not a good practice.
System goes down, you know, issues one day trying to get into the system and it was bad.
Yeah, I just tried to add that. I did, yeah. Yeah, I had, uh, the the printer had gone down the day before payroll and, um, the service tech couldn't guarantee that it would be up and running until on the next day, so, uh, I didn't know how I was gonna cut checks, which is, again, another reason to change things and hopefully that you all, um, are in agreement to go to direct deposit because employees want it. Do you have any questions about that process?
Does this, does this also apply to us?
How does it?
Yes.
Who?
Us.
You guys would still only get paid personally or?
Yeah.
Yeah. It just changes the date you get paid.
Yes.
Yeah. So as you, as I I put on the agenda that I I recommend that the council approve changing the payroll to a two week pay period. Um, and I've spoken with Justin in the public works department about this and and Laura, uh, communicated with her staff. I put out a memo to the employees to let them know how it how it would work. Um, so to the two week, a two week pay period beginning on Saturday, June twenty second and ending on Friday, July fifth, with payroll then being issued and processed on July twel-, I'm sorry, not processed. It'd be processed probably on the Monday before, but issued on July twelfth. And then it'll roll every two weeks thereafter, and I did give you the copy of the calendar that the employees had. So they know that there will be one pay week in there, that's gonna be a one week pay period. But, um, they're then going forward and we're, yeah, continuing on as a two week pay period.
Do we have to make an amendment then?
Uh, I would like your your, um, approval of it and then, yes.
I mean, do we?
There 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 are gonna be, so I know, um, we talk, what did we just change, something on?
Cell phone.
Yeah, the cell phone. There are several things that I've noticed in the employee policy and the mayor and I have yet to go through it that we need to really look at and I think I would be recommending some additional changes, so, um, once we get done with all of this TIP stuff and the budget amendment, I'd have some time to really look at it a little closer. I'd prefer not to make changes, bring forth a resolution to amend the the policy and change the policy, get out to employees and then do another one. I just prefer to kind of go through and make sure that, you know, the policy is a good policy and do it all at one time, if that is okay with the council.
I'm still confused, you, so it's like two weeks, so so every other Friday they get paid, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and are you paying up to date?
Pay one week behind.
One week behind.
Well, I'll be, okay, I'll say I do want to be a little difficult to figure.
No, yeah, that that's that's the problem right now.
One week behind.
Yeah, okay, all right, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah.
Pretty standard and almost all the truth.
Yeah, I know, I know it is, that's why, I couldn't see you do a, you do a curve on every Friday, okay, all right.
Oh, absolutely. No, no.
No.
Yeah. Other questions or concerns?
Again, motion?
Please.
Motion.
To change the payroll process?
To change payroll process.
Second.
Just, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, she has done a lot of work with this. And then if you wouldn't mind, um, approving the direct deposit form?
Motion to approve direct deposit, second to the employees.
I appreciate it because I have literally missed sending my timesheet in every time. I get a message saying, hey, use your timesheet, and I'm like, oh, no.
Missed it.
It's so bad, yeah.
Uh, there is a motion in a second, all those in favor of approving?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So if any of you as council members, may or need a copy of this to get your direct deposit information, or I can email it out to you? Your direct deposit information.
So do we have to wait until?
Uh, you do now.
We could, we could do it.
You do it right away, you, yeah, because you don't get, well, you won't get paid until the end of June, so you would be in, if you.
We could. We don't get paid. We don't get till. Yeah, end of June or July or something.
If you get get that to me, then you, that that will be your first one because the employees will go to it on July twelfth.
Do we have to fill out all the?
Just this, just this form, yeah, 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 if you want a copy, let me know.
Yeah, yeah. So I'll leave it, I.
Yeah, I didn't know if you if you have a printer to print it, but I can get your copy for sure, yeah, no, either way.
Yeah, I do, yeah, I can print it, that's no problem. Just just off the latest form, I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
I can print it.
All right, that brings us to the end of the agenda.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
By Adam, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We are adjourned.